Now, we're going to move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, adopt resolution establishing the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee and approving the committee bylaws, provide direction regarding selection process for appointing members to the committee.
Director DiMartini.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, the Finance Director. And it's my pleasure to be here this evening to present an overview of the Citizens Revenue Measure Advisory Committee. The agenda for the presentation this evening is as follows. First, give an overview of Measure G, which is called the San Bruno Street Repair Local City Services Measure. I'll then talk a little bit about the committee authority and the bylaws of the committee, discuss the application process, the timeline and next steps, and then staff's request to counsel. So just an overview of Measure G. Measure G is a half-cent sales tax district measure. This district measure was an ordinance that the City Council adopted, ordinance 1876, back on July 23rd of 2019, and it established Chapter 3.39 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And in the November 2019 election, the voters of San Bruno passed Measure G at 61.6 percent. It does increase the tax rate from 9.25 to 9.75 percent, and that revised tax rate will take effect on April 1st of 2020. This district tax measure is anticipated to generate approximately $4 million annually to the city. 100 percent of the district tax revenue will come to the city of San Bruno. And the ordinance that was adopted and the language in the ballot measure did create a citizens oversight committee, which is why we are here this evening. The role of the committee and the authority of the committee is twofold. First, the committee shall provide feedback to staff and the City Council regarding staff's recommended allocation of the tax funds, and the committee shall review an audited annual report of the revenues collected and how that money was spent. In the attachment to the staff report, it does provide a detailed bylaws document as to how the committee shall operate during the year. Staff is proposing to name the committee the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee. Staff is recommending that name be broad enough so that this committee has authority to review any such revenue measure that might come before the council in future years as well. The bylaws does dictate eligibility requirements for members to serve on the committee. It does require that the person serving on the committee be a San Bruno resident. They must be 18 years or older with an option of one youth representative. The person serving on the committee cannot serve concurrent terms on another board, commission or a committee, and current city employees cannot serve on the committee. Other than that, the member of the committee will serve a four-year term, initially staggered. So some of them might serve two years initially, some might serve four years to allow for the staggering of committee members over time. And the youth member will serve a two-year term. As far as the application process, as indicated in the staff report, staff are looking to the City Council to provide direction as to how to proceed with the application process. That will include the public outreach that may occur, the application process itself, how the council would like to conduct interviews with potential candidates to be members of the committee, and the selection process itself. So we're looking to you for guidance in that regard. This slide here lists a detailed timeline and next steps. Given the scope and the authority of the committee, being that staff are recommending and suggesting that the committee be involved in the budget process in order to make recommendations or provide guidance about how the tax revenues are to be allocated to specific projects, there are ideal meetings that should occur within the budget process that I wanted to outline here. So first, we're here before you tonight to request that you adopt a resolution establishing the committee and the bylaws. That will immediately open up the application period with a website that will be launched in preparation for that as well. We're proposing to close the application period early in February, on February 2nd, to allow council time to review applications so that on the City Council meeting on February 25th, the council may appoint members to the committee. That would then immediately move us into the budget process, starting in March and concluding in May. We're proposing a series of three meetings that the committee would have. First, in March, the committee would meet to initially cover the overview and the purpose of the committee, an overview of the city's budget, priority areas of council, the budget schedule, the bylaws of the committee, and the rules. The next meeting proposed in April would be to receive staff's preliminary recommendations for project funding for the upcoming budget cycle in fiscal year 2020, 2021. And then come back in May where the committee will meet to provide guidance to the City Council regarding staff's recommendations for project funding in fiscal year 2021. And then annually, in December, staff is proposing to have the committee meet to review the audited annual report of revenues that were collected and how those funds were spent for the prior fiscal year. And so the first meeting for the committee to review the audit report would occur in December of 2020. So just to summarize, staff's recommendation to council, we're requesting that you adopt a resolution establishing the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee, approving the committee bylaws, and provide direction regarding the selection process for appointing members to the committee. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from council to staff on presentation? Michael.
To the chair. Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to thank staff because this was a very comprehensive document that was assembled. But I did have a couple of questions on what is in there or not in there. When we established the Community Foundation, we built term limits into those positions, but we did not include term limits in this body, and I'm wondering if there was any thought given to that.
No, we did not build in term limits. The terms for all adult members is a four-year term, but the way it's structured now, people could be reappointed. One of the things that I'll say is similar to our current committees and commissions, sometimes finding people that are willing to dedicate the time to serve on those commissions is hard. And so you do have people that have served multiple terms. Should the City Council want to envision term limits, we could certainly do that. I would recommend staggering them so you don't sort of appoint everyone now and then have every one term out at the same time. With these type of boards that have a unique role, sometimes having someone with history serving on them is important, but term limits is a policy consideration that the City Council can consider.
Okay. And I thought of it because the county's Oversight Committee does have term limits. They're allowed to serve two terms. I think initially they started with two-year terms. They moved it to two four-year terms eventually, but something to consider. And then the only other comment was really around the -- I felt that the rules were a little light on the specific duties of the body. And Section 4, which addresses their authority and it says, you know, they're going to review the audit. But I'd like to see stronger language in there on requiring an annual report. I think it's suggested that an annual report may be created and reviewed by the committee, but I think that should be more of a firm requirement that we do provide an annual report on, that it be required, that the city produce that report, and that this body review it annually, in addition to just reviewing the budget. And then if there's any -- well, I don't think there's really any other authority that we would want to put on the body, but that was it. I just felt it was a little, that we could be a little bit stronger in that language and that we should provide a little bit more content there. It also references the change that we made to the municipal code, but I noticed that our online municipal code hasn't been updated with the new piece, so maybe we can make sure that gets published at some point. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Marty.
First, I'd like to thank the voters for trusting this council with this funding source. It's desperately needed. I am open to term limits, and what the county does seems fine, although we are kind of pushing out people that are volunteering for this work. But having that balance, I'm open to hearing what my colleagues have to say about that. I'm definitely in favor of having, requiring the annual report to be provided to council, copy of that report online. It's great that the staff is already thinking about the website or webpage. I'm not too sure about the youth rep. I know that it's, kids are, students are really, really busy in going to school, and we've had a hard time, or maybe not an easy time, keeping the park and recreation student rep onboard, and it's a two-year term. And I'm more concerned with making sure that we have people that have the expertise and skill set to review and audit these projects than perhaps making it available to our youth. So I'm not really sure why that's there. There's not a youth rep in the Bike and Ped Committee. There's not a youth rep in many of our other committees, but so the one other thing is the two-thirds vote requirement to remove a member. It's in there, so that's basically four out of the five council members would have to vote for that. I'm fine with the majority. And lastly, I think the, although I do appreciate the speed that this is now proceeding at, I'm concerned of being able to limit this current application process to February 4th. That's just a couple of weeks, and there'll be, perhaps a lot of people are not going to be aware of it, and being able to get the people in to let them know about it. So if we could maybe push that back a little bit, and I do look forward to interviewing people, so help spread the word, everybody that's here. Thank you.
Linda, did you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. I just had some suggestions. The first one is, I think it's a little bit contradictory where we have under Section 311 that a committee member can't be absent for three successive regular meetings without being excused, but then the committee only has to hold at least one meeting per year. So I wanted to ask that the meetings be quarterly, that there be mandatory quarterly meetings, especially as we start this process for the voters to ensure that, you know, their money is being accounted for. I also want to echo what Mr. Medina said about the youth seat, but I wanted to propose that that youth seat, instead of being filled with a high school student, be filled with someone 18 to 26 years old, a young adult member of our community. I wanted to also ask for clarification on Section 56. The committee shall not discuss or take action on any item of business not listed or posted on the agenda, and then there's a list of exceptions, but it doesn't explain how an item can be agendized. So how would a member of the public, how would the committee actually determine what items are going to be agendized? And then in regards to the duties for the review of the audit, I would also like to give the committee the mechanism to request a corrective action plan if there are audit findings on any of the, if there's audit findings in the audit that they review.
Sure. Through the chair.
Sure. Linda's got all her questions out there.
Yeah, and then I also echo both Councilmember Salazar and Councilmember Medina on the term limits. And if we could have, sorry, if we could also have the minutes available online, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Through the mayor. I'm sorry, I should have requested this at the beginning. Can we step through the comments through the individual council members to address them? Because if we're to act on this item tonight, I think some of those questions we can address, and if there's one that we can't address, and I just want to make sure we hit all of them.
And I've been taking notes, so I can go back.
Fair.
Okay. So I have my comments I'll hold for now, but let's go through the questions from my colleagues, which I have opinions on, and I will share those because maybe you'll tell me something different. I think what I've heard from all three at this point is in regards to just the term limits. I think you've answered that question, which was certainly you can, the county for Measure K oversight does two four-year terms, because obviously they probably were having a hard time finding people, too. So I think that's just a policy decision by the council members here. Stronger language on the annual report to be required. I'm hearing that from all three colleagues, four, that I think that is and should be. Is there any comment on that, City Manager?
Sure. Term limits, we can certainly add. I think we have a consensus for
You do.
Two four-year terms, so a total of
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we okay with that?
A total of eight years.
Two four-year terms.
Yeah, I echo what everybody said. Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would council be amenable to us starting those by some of the members being appointed for two years and some of the members being appointed for four years? That way, your initial group
I think you have to, and that's what we did
Right.
with the San Bruno Community Foundation was the same thing.
Fair. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we can't have everybody expire at the same time.
In regard to an annual report, we can add language requiring that a annual report be provided from the body to the council, but I also think what I hear from the City Council is an annual report be produced for the committee. And so we can write that in the bylaws, because these are bylaws for the committee. We can write that such that the committee reviews the annual report provided by staff. Because I think there are two types of reports we're talking about. One, you guys want to receive recommendations from them, and then two, you want a report produced for them to review that will also be forwarded to you.
Sounds good. Linda?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I feel like either way you go, staff will be involved. So for me, one annual report would be sufficient, and I understand that these are volunteers, but maybe volunteers working with staff producing just one report. I just feel like it's going to end up costing staff double the time to have two, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but to have two separate reports.
So the first report will be produced by staff, and that's a report on the expenditures for the year. The next is, I called it a report, but it's essentially like a staff report. It's a document that the body transmits to the City Council with their recommendations. And so typically, that is something that staff supports the commission or the committee in developing. And so as Keith articulated, the schedule, for example, when they review staff recommended annual expenditures, will likely be at least two meetings. And so by the second meeting, staff will come with a draft that the committee will vote on, that this is our report, our recommendation to the City Council.
Yes? Mike?
No, that sounds great.
Okay. The last one from Michael was the municipal code update, so that's just a cleanup thing, but acknowledged.
Reminder.
Reminder, yes. Kind reminder. Going, continuing on the youth rep, there was the question from Marty is, you know, is that best person to be seated? Linda had brought up about somebody from 18 to 26. I personally also am concerned being apart from Parks and Rec in the commission days and trying to find somebody for two years, and let me tell you, nowadays, they are busy. Between sports, between extracurricular activities, I think it's a challenge, and then usually they're trying to get ready for college. So I think the youth rep may not be unless there's some explanation you may have.
Absolutely. So I will take both the credit and the blame for this. And so for the youth rep, it's important to note that the bylaws have it in as an optional youth rep. It is not like the Parks and Rec where there are five members and one must be a youth rep. These are written such that the City Council has the option of appointing a youth rep, whereas most of our boards and commissions say clearly it must be an adult. And so the question is, why is there an option for a youth rep? And so when I was reviewing this, because I review everything that goes to council, I thought of, you know what, I got my start in government when I was in high school, appointed by a City Council member for the city of Oakland, and I served on the Planning and Oversight Committee, which was a required body because we reviewed proposals for children and youth programs and made a nine-binding recommendation to the City Council. And that committee was set up with both youth and adult members. And so Measure G, part of the funding items with Measure G, what we clearly heard from the community were improvements to our recreation facilities and our playgrounds. And so one of the thoughts was to allow the opportunity for a high school student, should they want to apply to be appointed, and that could be a voice on the committee for funding of things that are beneficial for youth. And so that's why it's written into the ordinance as an option. To Councilmember Mason's concern about a young adult, we can't actually, or it would not be advisable, Mark will tell me if it's illegal, but not advisable to put age limits in there, so it's typically adult or youth. And we were, in particular, when we said youth, not putting an age, and so we said must be a San Bruno resident attending high school. And so that's sort of why the option for a youth rep is in there.
Okay. That was a good explanation. Council's thought on the youth rep, a San Bruno resident that's at a high school, because we have two high schools currently in San Bruno.
Would it make a difference if we said a young adult rep attending college in San Bruno, attending college at Skyline?
Sure. It's a community college. It could be a youth or a senior adult.
Probably be 18 by then.
I mean, yeah, so let me clarify.
It would be great to get more young adults involved who are 18 and over, and not just, I feel like there's already a seat, right, on one of the other commissions for the youth, the Park and Rec?
So there is a seat on the Park and Recreation Committee for youth. I believe that is our only city commission where there is one youth that could serve. What's written in the bylaws is the option for a youth attending, residing in San Bruno, attending high school. What I believe you're asking for is, is there a possibility to either one, replace that youth representative with someone who you're envisioning would be a young adult, but say, attending college in the community? I think that's a policy decision for the City Council. I mean, I don't see, I shouldn't say, I don't see a legal issue. I could
Yeah, and I have similarities, you know, when I was a CAP, I was appointed to the San Bruno Citizens and Prime Conference Committee to represent teenagers. And then I got too old, so then I had to move to young adult. And they used to have 15 positions by age, as well as by business, as well as by what area of city you lived in. That's the committee. Now, those meetings, I will tell you, did go quite long with 15 people in a room, but that's how I got started. Giving back, because obviously, as a high school student, you know, I probably should have been doing other things, too, and maybe this was a good balancing to keep me out of trouble. But, you know, it's, you're listing it as an option. So for us to get into whether they're a young adult, whether they're in a high school, whether they're in a college, I think what you're saying is we can leave that as an opportunity, but it doesn't mean we have to go down that direction. Or it can be an advisory-type person that is just having input on areas that are of interest to them. Is that
Yes. I think the bylaws as currently written, it allows for a youth rep attending high school. I think the bylaws as currently written also allows for the City Council, as you get applications, to appoint someone, an adult of any age, representing any constituency that you like. And so as currently structured, the bylaws sort of give you maximum flexibility.
Okay. I like having maximum flexibility because maybe some thing, someone comes forward and just, you know, I'm thinking of Andrew Murtaugh off the top of my head, who came in as a youth rep and was just phenomenal in Park and Rec Commission when I worked there. It was, he just astounded me. And he worked at Parks. He's a firefighter now with his family, and so sometimes these things happen, and I like to have more options and flexibility rather than being more regulated, but that's just my opinion. Counsel?
I'm fine with keeping it in there as optional, as long as it's not a required position, because they are hard to fill historically.
They are. Linda?
Yep.
Okay. Next one was two-thirds vote to remove. I apologize.
Before we go, before we go on, can we, would you be open to making it in high school or attending Skyline College or a local college?
I think the importance is in having something available to somebody who's not already qualified. So if they're 18, they could qualify to be on the board. I don't think that we would need to make an exception, because then we get into that gray area. Are we being, are we giving somebody an advantage over other people? So qualified 18-year-old attending Skyline could apply and be appointed through normal channels. We wouldn't, I don't think, have to bring them in through a youth rep. I think there is more value in holding that position for a very ambitious, very young person who is not otherwise qualified, personally.
I'm looking more at ways to incentivize young adults to get involved, because most of our commissions and committees don't really have young adults. And I understand the argument that kids in high school are really busy, but 18 and over and without an age group, just even saying someone in college, it might give them more of a reason to apply if they think they have a better chance, because there's a seat for them, as opposed to them saying, well, who's going to select me? I'm a, you know, in college or whatever it may be.
Sure. If I can, just add a little bit. I would want to caution the City Council of setting policy based on age. I think that you'll get into a slippery slope the next time there's a commission. Well, what about a senior rep on every boarding commission? What about this group represented on every board or commission? As structured now, it's open to all adults to apply, and at the end of the day, the City Council is in the driver's seat because you decide on the appointees. And so I know when the City Council has their interview process, you consider a whole host of factors. One of the things that you probably should not explicitly consider are things that are protected classes, and age is typically one. And so I would just caution writing that in the policy, but I think in general speak, making sure you have a broad swath representation from various diverse groups within your community as you make your appointees is certainly something that you can envision to achieve.
So where are we at, council? I'm still fine with keeping it as I indicated earlier.
Same.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Linda. The next one was two-thirds votes to remove was brought up, and that a majority, three of the five council. What is it for other committee commissions and boards?
We've checked a couple of them, and it's a majority. I don't exactly remember why two-thirds was put in. It may have been from, we looked with staff and Keith's help in getting bylaws from other cities, and that may have been one of the ones in another city. So, but obviously, you can change it if you'd like.
I would suggest the majority be consistent, personally. All agreed. Okay. Next one was that February 4th may be too soon from tonight's conclusion, and I'm going to say that I would concur with that, too, because I think we really want to be able to get the word out and communicate and be effective. And maybe that is a short window. I know it pushes everything back, but what is staff's thought?
Absolutely. What I think we can do is, we can extend the deadline, but I think that we can, with council concurrence, we made this schedule based on having a committee selected and appointed, allowing enough time for your interviews, because we're sort of headed into the budget season, and staff will be making the initial Measure G recommendations that will then be forwarded to council. So we sort of backed up. I think with council's concurrence, just let us go back, and we'll identify a recruitment schedule, and that provides a little bit more time, and if we don't have a robust applicant pool, we can certainly keep it open.
Is that good with council? All right. Next is meeting quarterly to start. So there's a provision in it, and obviously, when one gets started, there's probably extra to do and embark upon, and then it could go to, you know, a less scheduled, but what is, sure. Staff's thought?
You know, when we looked at the bylaws for other boards, there were really You know, when we looked at the bylaws for other boards, there were really two groups of meetings that occurred roughly six months apart. You essentially meet around budget time, and the first meeting is typically, they're reviewing staff's recommendations, and there's a series of meetings around that, maybe multiple, for the commission to arrive at what they're ultimately going to recommend to the city council. And then there is a meeting sort of six months apart in December, maybe even January, when the audit is complete and they review the audit. And so that's how we structured this, to be roughly consistent with typical tax measure oversight boards. I think, should the city council want the group to get together quarterly, that is something that you can ask. And what that would require is staff putting together packets or an agenda for them that provides a status update. Another option is to require that the board meet at least four times a year, or at least three times a year, just by the normal cadence of how they're going through reviewing a number of recommendations. For example, this one, just in calendar year 2020, I think we have three, four meetings, and they're not quarterly, but they're more based around the work of the committee.
I can see now, I'm just verified with Michael, that like Measure K oversight for the county, which is a big, it's twice a year. So I can see you already have something in there for regular meetings, special meetings can be called. So I don't know that we here should be trying to look through the crystal ball about, well, they need to meet four times. Well, what if there's not a necessity? But yet, we're saying they do. And then we have staff that's going to have to do that. So I don't know if we keep it how it is, because special meetings can be called, obviously in this case, there are going to be more meetings to begin with for obvious reasons. But Linda, that was something that you had brought up, so what are your thoughts?
Well, I think if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but Measure K, though, does every, when there's money that's allotted, there is a public meeting and it's requested at the Board of Supervisors? Right?
Separate from oversight.
Right, so.
That would be the case here.
So here, that, so that here, there would be, as money is expended, it would come to us, and it would, and we would be told this is Measure G funds, and it would be approved by the city council?
No, no. So this is a tax oversight board where the city, without this board, let's sort of begin there, city staff will make a recommendation on how to spend the roughly $4 million in tax revenue, and that will go from staff to the city council, be amended or adopted, and then make it into the budget. With this board, it's an intermediate step, where staff makes the initial recommendation to the committee, the committee reviews it, and then opines at the same time that staff is giving their recommendation. And so when you get the recommendation for the Measure G expenditures, you will get it both with the committee's recommendation and with staff recommendations, and hopefully 99.9% of the time, it's the same thing. And so that, at time of allocation, is once a year, and that's around budget time. Every time, you know, let's say if we allocate a million dollars for road expenditures, every time the city enters into a contract with the vendor to spend on that road project, we're not coming back to the city council or coming back to the commission. It would happen similar with all of our regular appropriations, whereas we had turned to contract, anything under $70,000, the city manager has the authority to sign any contract. Over $70,000 needs to come to council. But once it's approved in the budget, it will essentially be treated like a revenue source, like any other revenue source, be it gas tax, general fund, TLT tax, et cetera.
So I guess my concern is that, and this was my concern with Measure G before, but that it essentially becomes part of the general fund, or, right?
No, it does not become part of the general fund. So the way our budget works is, the general fund is our largest pot, when we're not talking enterprise funds. But we do fund accounting, and so every fund is, stays in its own fund, and there's annual reporting, there's annual accounting. So for example, when the city approves our road budget, sometimes there's general fund money, sometimes there's gas tax, sometimes there's other special revenue money. The action, when the city council adopts it, it doesn't all become general fund money. It still stays in its home fund, and we expend it out of those home funds so we can have fund accounting. And so gas tax always stays in gas tax. Measure G will be in a special fund. Caveat being, Measure G is a general purpose revenue. So Measure G, by definition, is general purpose revenue. It is general fund money. But it will not be lumped in with all of our regular general purpose revenues. What we will do for Measure G is, it will essentially be in a sub-fund of the general fund, and all of those funds will always be in that sub-fund, so they can be tracked, and we can actually do the annual report based on the activity in that sub-fund.
Okay. So I guess my concern is that this is a tax that doesn't have an end date, right? So with no end, I would be concerned that this turns into a once-a-year meeting, rubber stamping, a budget, whatever the budget is that the staff recommends. And that's not to say that staff isn't trusted, it's to say, where is then the true oversight? So is there going to be, can, will the oversight committee have an ability to make a recommendation for how the money should be expended, and how would that happen? What would be the process for that?
Absolutely. So I think it's spelled out in the bylaws and our articulation today that annually, staff will make a recommendation for Measure G expenditures. That recommendation will go to the committee. The committee will view that, and they may have changes, they may concur, but they will submit their recommendation to the city council. And so the city council will, every year, when you receive Measure G expenditures, receive staff's recommendation and the recommendation from the committee. 99% of the time, that should be the same. And that's how staffs work with these oversight boards. You don't ever annually want to be walking in with the overboard saying, city council, spend it this way, and staff's saying, spend it this way. You know, I think we strive, we're going to strive to be in congruence with the committee.
Through the chair, I wanted to also just add to that, that the way this, these rules are written, this body actually has more authority than the county's oversight board, because the county oversight board doesn't make any recommendations on how to spend the money. They only review how it was spent by the Board of Supervisors. So they actually do have more say than they do at the county level.
So I would still say that I think it needs to be definitely more than one meeting a year. I think you need at least a meeting for recommendations from the oversight committee, a meeting to approve what staff is recommending, and then probably a meeting, I'm not sure of the timing or the time, what the timeline is every year, but to meet again, to say this is, whether there's any audit findings on the Measure G money. So I would still recommend that there be at least initially four meetings. I would imagine that the city council can amend the bylaws after the first or second year as needed, and it seems like it would just take a vote, just like tonight, to do that. But as we're starting, I really think it's important that we show the people who voted and supported this, I believe it was 61%, that there, that this is being taken really seriously, and that there is going to, there are going to be meetings, there's going to be, that are open to the public, and people are going to understand how this money is being expended.
Marty, the chair.
So just looking at this, there's at least three meetings every year. So can we compromise and say three?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what happens if it's three years from now, or whatever? And there's not, I mean, because I'm also a believer, you don't just meet to meet, right? There's got to be purpose, there's got to be value for the time that's spent. So what if it goes down the path, and all of a sudden it says, you know what, three's too much? We need to, do we have to actually change the bylaws, or can they just, as we did on December 24th, we canceled the meeting? Or how is that?
We can add a provision that the third meeting can be canceled. So, I mean, I think.
Like every other committee commission and board?
Yeah, like, yeah, I think we can write the bylaws that, with a minimum of three annual meetings, but also have a provision that allows for a meeting to be canceled, like we have, you know, all of our other commissions. If they do not have a reason to meet, they don't meet, and they cancel their.
And in 2020, we could see a minimum of three, like Marty said, or if not four.
Right. I think the way we do it is, we write a clause that says there needs to be a minimum of three regularly scheduled meetings, and then.
You can add the provision. Is that acceptable?
Good.
Good. This one's easy, so I'm going to take this one real quick. Minutes online, we can do that like we do the other groups.
Yes.
There was the 5.6, I believe if I heard correctly, on how agendized. So I think, Linda, what you were asking is, how does somebody walk in and say, I want to put something on the agenda, or like a member of the body?
A member of the body or the public?
So this will be a brownneck body, so members of the public are not allowed to put items on the agenda. Typically, the staff liaison for our committees will work with the chair to structure the agenda. Other members of the body can send something in to the staff liaison, but because it is a brownneck body, everything would need to be agendized. That is up for discussion. In general, though, for these bodies, because they are talking about budgetary expenditures, in general, sort of, everything's on the agenda. And so if a member of the committee, for example, wanted to say, oh, I think we should use Measure G money for X, that doesn't have to be agendized. And I think that would sort of be the more common occurrence.
And then also, this one, I'll need help, Linda. Review corrective action plan. Will you help me better understand what?
Oh, there's a comment about that the committee would review the audit. And so if there are audit findings, since it's the oversight committee, then they would request staff to prepare a corrective action plan for those findings.
Our committees don't direct staff, and so that would need to come from the city council. And so if there is something in the audit that the commission does observe, they would note that in their report to you, and then that will be addressed by either council direction to staff, or more than likely, staff will provide a comment on that when the recommendation goes to the city council.
And then, so that group would realize that that would be their role. If they found something that they weren't comfortable with, they should obviously withen their annual report, bring it to council, council then can take action, look at it, and give direction to staff, correct? Okay. Did that, take care of that one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so to my colleagues, I went through the items that I heard from each of you. Did we, did I miss any?
I missed one.
Okay. I did.
I just wanted to ask, under 31, we included that you can, committee members shall not be current council members, members of any other city board, committee, or commission, or current employees of the city. I was wondering, recently, we've had funds coming into the community foundation and Measure X, which are, Measure X was public funds, if the council would be open to including those as well? It's a, these are large sums of money, so that we don't have the same people on all of the boards.
So for those that are on the Measure X oversight, and what was the other one?
The community foundation. Those are the only two that I know that have funds that officially go into the city.
Since we appoint, would they not, would the community foundation specifically not be, would they not be considered in this, since we appoint them?
So I think the community foundation is covered by the provision that they not be a member of any other current board, community foundations of board, so I think that would be covered already. And I don't know about the Measure X people.
That Measure X is not, can we even, do we have the ability to do that, since they're not?
So Measure X is not a city committee, and so that's the San Bruno Park School District. If I can, I want to articulate why we included the provision that excludes members of existing boards and commissions. The rationale for that was, the committee will be making recommendations on expenditure funds for a variety of things, and if there was a member of a board or commission, they may be more in favor of the thing that is aligned to their board or commission.
And it also allows other folks to serve in capacities.
Right.
For the community.
Absolutely. With Measure X, Measure X is not a city committee, and so that was not a part of our framework. I think by policy, could the city council exclude members on other organizations, committees or boards? Yes. What I would say is, you would want a policy rationale that would sort of allow for you to, that wouldn't prevent you from appointing someone that could be very beneficial serving on a city committee, just because they happen to serve on another board for another agency. And so that foreseeable, that could happen, and we know sometimes how hard it is to get people to serve on our boards and commissions.
And that also will take out four people, I'm sorry, at least two people in this community for, because you'd have to say Measure K, too. Why Measure X and not Measure K? And each supervisor gets two appointments. So, anyway, but I know you would add that.
Yeah, so Measure K is county, so I'm really focusing on two areas that are very specific to San Bruno. I think the foundation, Measure X combined have about $140 million, and I don't believe that they currently have any provisions that state that you can't be on more than one committee. So with the comments made earlier about even the youth rep getting people to volunteer to get involved, I would be concerned in the same way, having, I would be concerned not to, you know, limit somebody who might be competent and help the city. But I'd also be concerned that people who may not be qualified are going to be on all three, and we're talking about, you know, a lot of money at that, and we're already talking about a lot of money. Again, it's over $155 million. So I would still urge counsel that we consider, that we seriously consider this.
The Measure X.
Measure X and the community foundation.
Comments from my colleagues? Michael, Marty?
My only concern would be that unless we have a real rationale for excluding, like the city manager said, where there's clear conflicts of interest between the voting bodies, it'd be difficult to exclude people, only because, because, I mean, Measure X people specifically, I mean, their pot of money is completely separate from anything the city is managing. So to say that because they're on that, they can't serve on that, it's hard for me to rationalize that in my mind on why that's a conflict. I get that it's a lot of money combined, but I just, I don't understand why it's a conflict.
Marty?
So let me try, I understand, I heard right. So if somebody serves on the community foundation, they cannot be on this foundation. So that's one of the three that is mixed, right?
Yes.
I'm okay with somebody that has competent skills on Measure X, serving on this committee. I don't really have a problem with that. We get to select, as a council, who's on there, and reviewing their qualifications, and asking them, and making sure there was no conflict of interest. So I hear the amount of money, but I think that this is distinct enough, it's separate pots, and I'm okay with somebody on, being on that Measure X committee, being on this committee as well. I'm all right with that.
And I do share the sentiment of my two colleagues, that I do think it's separate, it's two entities or two different measures, and if there is somebody of competence, as was indicated, that's of potential value. But again, we're ultimately making that decision, too, by those that are coming before us. Is there any, did I miss anything else? I didn't miss, but is there anything else that came up that we haven't covered? Okay, so I think we've covered everything, and honestly, out of all that we've all talked about, I think there was just one item that we're all, weren't in concurrence to, so that's, I think, pretty darn good. So did staff write all this down, or you need my notes? Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry. We were going to ask if there were.
Yes, I was going to ask if, from the public, and then we're going to get to the procedural. Is, there's no speaker cards? If anybody did want to speak, if you wouldn't mind all just going over to the podium now, and then we'll, like to hear from you. Thank you.
I just had a really, a quick question that kind of goes to council member Mason's interest in incentivizing youth participation. Is the optional youth member, is the idea that you have N members, and you're allowed to appoint one of the N members to be a youth, or is the youth member an additional seat?
One of the five.
Okay. Yeah, so in that case, clearly, the college member you could appoint already, so it's kind of irrelevant, it's not like it's a reserved seat, and if we can't find a high school member, then, oh, a college member would be a nice addition as well. So, okay, I appreciate that.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the Measure X thing. And, I mean, the, being a part of the oversight committee for Measure And, I mean, the, being a part of the oversight committee for Measure X, we don't have any say in how the money is spent. So there's really no, I don't see the kind of the conflict there. I don't have any intention of trying to get on this committee, but, but, you know, that, the amount of money that is being spent under Measure X, as a committee member, we can't direct or even suggest how it be spent. So I don't know if that might make it a little easier for you, Linda, to.
No, I think it, I think it concerns me more about Measure G, to be quite honest, because Measure X had the same campaign, the same campaign slogans around oversight, strong oversight over how the money is funded. Thank you.
Or is this not really that strong?
Thanks for the clarification, Stephen. Next, please. Is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, this will be the last speaker.
Hi, Marsha Glassner. I just want to say that if you are going to count on this ability to schedule a special meeting if one is needed, that maybe you want to address how that would be done, because the, you know, some of the organizations, you know, some of the committees that I've gone to their meetings, it's not real clear-cut, and it takes a couple of meetings in order to have a special meeting, and so you want to make sure that's not going to happen if you only have a couple of meetings a year.
Thank you. Now, city attorney.
If there is agreement or consensus or majority on all those items, staff has noted them, and so, if there is a desire, the city council could make a motion, adopting the resolution with all of the changes reflected that have been discussed and agreed either unanimously or by majority. I think we've gotten all those down and understand what those are.
Can we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution with the amendments stated here tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mason?
No.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one with Councilmember Davis absent.